Public business matters lawfully exempted from open evening department by Virginia law were discussed and two only such public business matters had been identified in the motion by which the closed meeting was concluded or heard, discussed, or considered.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. And may I call?
President.
President?
Present.
Here.
And here. Here. Here.
Can we stand for a pledge of allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in the business of liberty and justice for all?
Madam Chair, I move that we approve the O nine seventeen twenty twenty four agenda as presented.
Sir.
All in favor?
Aye.
Yes ma'am.
On September eleventh, I emailed out on the start, Madam Chair, there's an agenda item that I requested for open session that I don't see listed. I asked for an update during open session on which board members are serving on interview panels. I'd like to have that added.
There are no interviews scheduled, it's not like...
There've been interviews since the last meeting?
Yes, there were two in the chair, the vice chair and Admiral both of those.
Right. Right. Ready for question? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Madam Chair, I move that we approve the minutes from the oh nine oh three twenty twenty four meeting as presented.
Sir.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Is there a motion to G D list?
Madam Chair, I move that we approve the D E list as presented.
Sir.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Is there a motion on the religious exemptions?
Madam Chair, I move that we approve the religious exemptions as presented.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes and is there a motion on the re-admission and the suspension?
Madam Chair, I move that we approve the case of, for the re-admission case as presented, case number zero nine seventeen twenty four oh one.
Second. Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. And suspension?
Madam Chair, I move that we approve then case number oh nine seventeen twenty four oh two as discussed.
Second. Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The vouchers. Are there any questions about the vouchers? Is there a motion to approve the vouchers?
Madam Chair, I move that we approve the vouchers as presented this evening.
Second. Thank you. All in favor of approving the vouchers?
Aye.
Opposed? And we will leave the personnel list, since we're not talking about that until the end of the day. A public comment. Sheriff Todd Wester. Do you want to read it?
Rules of public comment. One, identify yourself by name and nine one one address. Two, speakers unlimited for three minutes. Three, individuals may reserve or transfer their time to another speaker. Four, specific personnel matters must not be initiated at a public meeting. Five, speakers cannot be abusive, threatening, or use profanity. Six, specify the nature of your remarks. Seven, speakers who have previously spoken on a subject or public comment should not be allowed to readdress the matter during the same public comment period. Eight, specific questions should not be, excuse me, specific questions should be resolved prior to the meeting by contacting the superintendent or the appropriate staff. Nine, anyone who would like to present a PowerPoint presentation for public comment has to present the presentation twenty-four hours in advance for review by their staff or appropriates. And ten, all questions shall be directed to the chair, who will at her discretion solicit the response from the appropriate staff member.
Good evening, Chairwoman Janet Turner and members of the board. I come to you tonight as your sheriff discussing cooperation between the Acuama County Sheriff's Office and Acuama County Public School Administration. When my office receives reports of possible school threats or reports of criminal activity occurring at one of our schools, it's critical that my deputies or investigators are provided with the information necessary to conduct a proper investigation. This ensures that every child and staff member in the schools are safe. Just this week, I was called by Dr. Hall advising of a possible threat at school. During early stages of the investigation, one of my investigators was told by a principal at the middle school that he would have to obtain a search warrant to get certain information regarding several students possibly involved. I immediately called Dr. Hall and she told me to put the request in writing. I was on the scene with my deputies during this incident and I shouldn't have to leave the school where there's a possible threat, to put something in writing that I am exempt from in accordance with FERPA and the Code of Virginia. I have copies of FERPA, the Family Education Rights and Privacy Act that I've given to you all tonight, and the Code of Virginia that covers me. In closing, I hope Acuama County Public School Board changes its policy when it deals with disseminating information to law enforcement because our children deserve better. Thank you.
Can I just ask you a little question? So you were investigating, you're actively investigating the possible threat?
Correct.
And you were trying to follow up and get more information?
Correct.
And the information would have been coming from some students?
Correct. You know, and if you look at the FERPA that I gave you, the Family Education Rights and Privacy Act, it says, if you look at the highlighted area, it says generally, schools must have written permission from their parent or eligible student in order to release any information from a student's education record. However, FERPA allows schools to disclose those records without consent to the following parties or under the following conditions. And if you look at the next page, the exemptions, appropriate officials in cases of health and safety emergencies and state and local authorities with a juvenile justice system, which I am pursuant to the specific state law. And then if you go to the Code of Virginia, twenty-two point one two eighty-seven, limitations of access to records. No teacher, principal, or employee of any public school nor any school board member shall permit access to any records concerning any particular pupil enrolled in the school in any class to any person except under judicial process unless the person is one of the following. If you look at five, state and local law enforcement or correctional personnel, including a law enforcement officer, probation officer, parole officer, or administrator, or a member of a parole board seeking information in the course of his duties. We don't want the child's educational record. We want some important information, name, date of birth, address, mom and dad's name. It's all we need to conduct our investigation. And like I said, I believe our kids deserve better to us so we can conduct a proper investigation and make sure there's no threat to our public schools.
Madam Chair, I have a question.
Yes.
I'm curious, what was the outcome? If you shared it already, what was the outcome?
It was not a viable threat after we did our investigation. Thank you.
Anyone else? Thank you. We're going to look into this.
Thank you.
Thank you. Kiva Dennis.
Good evening. My name is Kiva Dennis. I live at one six one six eight Bloxum, Lincoln, I mean Lincoln Highway, Bloxum. I'm here as a parent, but I'm also a employee. I have a six-year-old special needs child who's not getting, currently getting, a free and appropriate education that he's supposed to get. I hear everything Dr. Hall, Dr. Hall is what Dr. Hall want. Why is everything what Dr. Hall want? I had I A P meeting. I don't feel comfortable sending my son to school because he can't talk. We've been denied early drop-off. We've been denied a regular school bus. I hear it's what's in the best interest for our kids. We're here for kids, but we're not here for our kids. I have rights and I feel like Acuama County is denying me all my rights and this is my last resort. I'm not going to stop until I pursue this. If I have to get a lawyer, I'm going to pursue this because I have rights and I'm taught that my rights being denied because of Dr. Hall. That's all I have to say. Basically, I'm tired of my rights being denied. I'm tired. It's been a long ten-year fight with Acuama County. So I said thank you for your time.
Thank you. Someone will hold up a key. Anyone else have a question? Is there any? My name is Joel.
Good evening. I sent one out last week when the agenda was posted and I updated it today and Ed can look sideways at it again because my Adobe still doesn't do right. But anyway, there were a lot of reimbursements made over the weekend, over two million dollars worth of CARES reimbursement. So I did do a slight or big update. You see Title One, we already met the threshold. We will have no problem meaning migrant or Title Two or Title Three or Title Four. Title Five, we have a pipeline and it's expected to come in September. So that's the one that looks like it's close, but we do have enough purchase orders in the pipeline that that's expected to clear. And then looking at the updated figures on the back, which, these are not the updated figures, but the sideways one is. You'll see we spent, as for three, from five million down to three million and a number of the other ones. We closed out the H VAC grant. We're about to close out the homeless. I've talked to you before about the recruitment and retention and the RARS, R A R S grant. That's because either Clara or Ms. Whitlock sent things out for teachers to take advantage of coursework to be certified and we just did not have them take up on that. Ms. Evans will make sure that the mentor teacher grant is spent as well. So there will be pretty close to that amount left over on the after-school programs and we are expected to come close to clearing out the summer programs. Are there any questions?
I think it's not on this, but for our next meeting, can you prepare a spreadsheet updating us on the twenty-four million excess of how we're going to be spending that? I know we talked about it in August.
Right.
You were looking into some things.
It might not be the next one because the report will be done at the end of September, but it will be in October.
Okay. Perfect. We can just have, you know, drive only twenty-four million and then our can spread out.
Because that has to be approved before we'll spend any of that.
Correct.
That, what I did before was just an outline of suggestions. All of that must be approved by this board.
Correct. I guess I'm presuming you're going to be reaching out to the schools and stuff too to see if we can see everything and kind of hammer it out and stuff. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, I sent you in public all the three things that you told us to look at or learn at this place and that was the school security officers, baby sensors, and the rental property, alternative. So I've given you a report which outlines the costs of each one of these three areas and some recommendations that coincide with each one.
Is this, we just got one quote on the baby sensors.
This is the one that I think didn't Mr. O'Shea in there, this is the, is this the company that you guys were looking at compared to the top of the five agencies? The bait detectors, is this the quote?
Yeah, that's the same, that's the same. Why do you come apart? That is the same one.
Yes. This is the same company.
Would you, so would to see with the other companies if it's comparable or if this is the best for us?
I can't hear what you're saying.
Is there a possibility that we can also look for other possible quotes to see if this is the best cost?
I'm already investigating other companies, trying to get where I can get comparable quotes on it. The installation of them is not part of that quote we were getting absolutely due to the quote on installation. They do most of our wiring on data stuff anyway, so the quote was the wiring section from the bait thing. But I'm looking at two other companies right now, trying to get proposals.
Any other questions?
Well, Madam Chair.
Yes ma'am.
So my question is what, from your line as a chair, what is, what is the next step? Barring, I understand we would get a couple more proposals on the base for that category, do we need to talk about the rental properties piece? Do we need to just talk about the total amount that is offered for security officers? Particularly considering there's a proposed timeline. So the longer we delay, then it delays the danger officers, ambassadors who start.
So we can move forward with this whole thing or just, we could just move forward with the security officers. I understand we had some interest and I believe, you know, Mr. Johnson couldn't start interviewing those folks and we definitely can start on that. And I don't know, this was, this one property that's, that is mentioned here is one that was offered to us, but I don't know if there's, if there's other properties, properties that have, which was also until we got the grant. Yeah.
So Madam Chair, with the comments that were listed on the rental properties, you know, new GM which is required or no access to, I guess, facilities with work as a joining. Two others there, students who have had opportunity to be students on campus.
As I understood, Jennifer Anis is not here to address this, but it's not the gym part, it's the, it's the health education piece that they did in the beginning when they were at the Alped trailer.
And it's the gym also.
Oh, the gym.
They never did come on.
So they have a basketball court, that wasn't enough?
No, it's the gym, it's gym also. Because that one time I were proposing to take them to and do a bus since we had a driver, they're going to do it so we can leave that requirement, but.
So like we make parts, is there a chance that this space is not paying the usual maintenance cost of the year to that amount?
No, I mean, the space in parts way is, as I said in here, it would accommodate all the programs that we have and everything. It's just, you want to pay the fee and utilities have enough and we would probably have to put some security there also at the front of the, you know, the cameras.
Who's moving?
At the front of the. But there's access to, I mean, the bus stopping on, I'm going to come in, but probably stopping on three sixteen to bring the kids down if we needed to and someone would have to be out there to meet the kids. Because right now in Valdez, right, we need to, with that young man, we don't have anyone there to do that type of, we don't have anyone there and there would be a.
There, coming. With regard to leasing this property, there's a line that says we need to consult our lawyer. Is there more that we can find out about that? I mean, do we think that it's probable that we could get this, a lease of this type passed the attorney? And my only other question is, is there a good enough return on investment when we're leasing property as opposed to purchasing it or getting it gratis, free, right? This set of money is for one year, although my understanding is that it is usually renewable if nobody signed that check, right? So I'm, while I want to be supportive of what we have approved, I do have those additional concerns. I'll repeat, in case I wasn't clear, because I'm not sure I'm clear on my own line. Do we think we can get a lease passed an attorney? Do we know yet? And just a slight concern about establishing a site that we may not be able to maintain.
I would think that this would be a temporary, this would be a stopgap and that we would need to make a long-term plan whether we purchase another trailer or we do something else. This would fix our, this would fix our problem for today.
And would we reconsider as a part of this, putting all the kids back in? And we talked about that, I talked about that, just putting all of them in the reconnect trailer. Because right now it's, Ms. Jordan is four? Four of them. Four students now. Now, but that one's going, so it's only four. Two middle school and two high school kids. That's all we have now that are not ultimately enrolled into a middle school. And then go to Arcadia Middle and two at Arcadia High School. So all four of them could go, one taken out of the school, or four of them could go to reconnect them in. And then we have not only the four of them there, but we have four adults in that house because you have the teacher and the aide that's at the connect now and you have the teacher and the aide from Arcadia that we count down.
But how, I'm sorry. How long will reconnect trailer be there? I mean, if they start construction on Acuama County, I mean, will the trailer have to be removed if it's something that we use for this full school year? I mean, how good is that?
I don't know what phase they would want that trailer moved. It wouldn't be until the phase they did the parking lot, so it probably wouldn't be until the latter phase of the building in there.
So you would think we can beat through this school? Now, when the other kid going to reconnect as the year progresses, is there going to be enough room for all of them?
It's enough room there for about fifteen because we expanded it last year. I think we expanded it and put more stations there. So it's, therefore, it is.
Well, what's the, what would have been the highest number of lights that we had in that trailer?
That was, you know, we, this was about to have some change. There's always fifteen, that's kept. That's why we had it more. We had more than we had green. We have to give it to the school years.
We would.
I guess my concern would be, what's the act that farmer is, is disrupted and for reconnecting those who are there? Is that big enough to house some of these? I think we will.
I, it probably always depends on.
I think it's something we're looking at and figuring out of actual turn of place.
So with that being said, that do we, go ahead and still need to wait all the rental property? With the lawyer and stuff, that you just approve the SSO's second season? I'm thinking we could use reconnect trailer, we would need to wait the property this long because they would continue booking to save for next year.
Well, last year we reconnected the right half space. We suspended some H L W reconnect trails before and there was kids in Alped too. So now we're just down to one trailer. So it would be a very, I think, it's, would be a very temporary fix.
Also, I think it depends on how quickly bids come back and when they want to start construction and maybe latter part of the school year or then they have to do something with that.
So you guys suggesting doing the rental, law room and all that?
Yes.
I'm reading here, it says other properties which require three to five-year lease. The property we're looking at is a month-to-month, one-year lease or?
One, yeah, just month-to-month.
Month-to-month. So we could lease the property and like Dr. Johnson says, still look for somewhere to purchase, but at least, at least we have this property for now, which gives the children where to go.
And she informed us when, the C S B person informed us that they would have to just consult the maintenance and whatever thing to decide on when we leave, because I asked those, because we wouldn't have looked at it now.
And when I read further, we need to consult with our lawyer regarding lease agreement on this venture. It's not that we need to consult the lawyer or policeman, we just want Hammer Her to look at the agreement to make sure it's written right and we're not responsible for agreement development and that's not liable or shouldn't be responsible.
It's not just that, that was the one who let you know that you need to have to.
As a school board, we have limited authority to tie money into future years. So we would have to look at, no, a three to five-year lease would be, would be a problem because you would be obligating a future board. So I think a year's lease would possibly be okay, but we would just have to look at our restriction in general on a lease.
Well, if they're willing to lease it month-to-month, I like Dr. Johnson's idea of looking for a lease to purchase and act as a more permanent.
So you want to move forward with the house and the interweaving of the security guards?
Yes, we do, we definitely want that.
Thank you.
I move, Madam Chair, that we approve.
Take the next steps.
Take the next steps for the SSOs with that process as well as for the rental property as presented.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And just a minute, when you have more information about the baby sensors, you'll bring that to us and.
If that could be, if you can. Get that added.
You can wait till tomorrow if you're. Ms. Farrell. Elementary updates.
Good evening, everyone. So tonight I wanted to start with, we'll see kind of the theme of my PowerPoint presentation this evening is collaboration with partnerships from the community. So I've noted several partnerships that we have. Ms. Taylor and I have been working hard to increase those partnerships and get our children out to the community more. So this first one, these pictures here are from our summer school program for elementary. We worked with Ms. Jen Miller, who's at the Brownsville Nature Conservancy, and we did a program for our current fifth graders and our rising fifth graders. And the program is called T and C Shore Explorers. And Jen Miller and her team came into all the schools and worked for over a two-week period with each school. They did many field trips that were related to issues that are pertinent to eastern shore and then they did a culminating activity at the end where they presented their projects. Some example would be pollution in the Chesapeake Bay and they presented their projects. That's what you see here. All the schools came to the Tompkins and presented to students and family and community members here. So that was a really neat project and we're going to work on growing that project in the coming years. Next here you see some pictures of our elementary students in our STEM lab. This year, all of our labs have a full-time I A. Last year, two of our labs shared an I A, but we're excited that each school has a full-time I A. And you can see some of the kids on either end are students of Acuama doing a building project. And in the center you see Ms. Leelen Young's students working on, looking at various things in the microscope and doing exploration activities. Another new partnership we have that we're excited about is we're working with Ms. Samantha Willis. She's the community outreach coordinator for Virginia Eastern Shore Land Trust and they have a program specific to second grade students and that's aligned with our standards so that this is an additional field trip opportunity for our students that the schools are working with her on. And here's just another picture of some of the activities that these students will be participating in and this is also at Brownsville Nature Conservancy. A few curriculum updates, some of these things I've shared, the progress and steps in previous meetings, but our pacing guides are complete for mathematics and for first semester for E L A. Ms. Owens and I are working with teams of teachers to complete the pacing guide for our reading classes and standards this year. Some D L A updates, we have updated our literacy plan. Updates are due December sixth and we only had one required update from the state and that was just an inclusion link where community. And that was just an included link where community members and families can access the plan on our website. We are also very, kudos to our teachers who are working really hard to meet the PD requirements under the Virginia Literacy Act. We've had numerous teachers already complete, even though they have all year to do it, they've already completed that. So kudos to them working hard. We're excited that we have a small team of kindergarten teachers work this summer on a new kindergarten report card. It's aligned with our new standards. It's, they can access it electronically, so it's saving on a lot of, because if you know, the kindergarten report card is quite lengthy. It's not one we can just print from Power School. So it's a lot of handwritten work. So I know, I think our kindergarten teachers are very excited about that. We started PALS testing this week. If you remember, we previously did PALS testing. This is a new assessment under the Virginia Literacy Act. And before, our teachers had a day or two with a sub where they would go through and test all the students. But now, this testing is broken into small little bits of assessments. So they're able to do it over a three-week period and not have to be out in the classroom for two days. So that's new information, again, that's going to take place over the next three weeks. And then we'll start building the reading plans that you've heard me reference. Any student K three who is in the high-risk bandwidth, which means they are many indicators that they are not reading on grade level. They will be required to have a reading plan. We have, we purchased additional license to go book. If you're not familiar with that, that's a program that our Special Education Department uses to help build IEPs that are aligned with student individual, student needs. And we found that this is going to help us with our reading plans as well. Ms. Owens is working on a few updates with the curriculum. She's working on an FAQ document for the Virginia Literacy Act. She's working on a glossary of literacy terms. And we know the BLA is K eight. And some of our middle school teachers may not know certain words like encoding, decoding, things that we're used to at the elementary level. So she's working on putting together a glossary of literacy terms. All right, next, some upcoming events we have. We're excited, and I know you've been caring about our parent university. That's this Saturday here at the Tompkins. We have our third grade farm day, which Ms. Allen and Mr. Reader and I were talking about how, how many years this, this program has been in place. It's a new thing to this program this year is it's actually going to be held here at the Tompkins in the large field adjacent to the building. We, for years, we've gone up to a farm in New Church. But for, for several reasons, they weren't able to do that this year. So we've got it all set up with Teresa Pittman. And I've met with her out here. We've kind of mapped everything out. Mr. Bennett has helped us to make sure, you know, that we have a few pieces of large farm equipment and it's there in the appropriate place. So we're excited about that. I told you about PALS testing. And next week, we start our BPI audit. That's the Virginia Preschool Initiative. And we are, we'll be going through an audit where representatives from the state will come, interview teachers, assistants, myself, and really dig deep into our preschool program and, and the curriculum. And you guys know the Bookmobile is kind of one of my, my babies. So I just wanted to throw this in here, that we are at eleven thousand forty-two books that have been handed out to students. So that's, that's pretty incredible. So we're excited about that. And on this page, you'll see another community stakeholder that we collaborate with. And this is Gauges, which is Go and Grow Eastern Shore. They're a group of people that work closely to make sure that families have access to all of the resources from birth to five and to make sure our students are kindergarten-ready. So Acamac County Public Schools and Northhampton County Public Schools is working with them, teaming up on a program where they build backpacks for new moms at the local hospital here. And we're going to be working with them on putting a book, a board book in each of the book bags. Like I said, from our county and from Northampton. So we're excited about that to be helping, helping new moms and, and their children. That's all I have. Does anyone have any questions?
That is a lot of stuff. Do all the secondary students go to, is it Brownsville?
So that's a new field trip that we're working on this year. Ms., Ms. Willis reached out to Kegateake and Panketake because Acamac and the Tompkins. And she's also reaching out to Shinketig. Acamac and the Tompkins did something with her program last year. So she reached, is reaching out to them first and then let's open to everyone. And we've got some, I've approved quite a few field trips already this year, which is exciting. Kudos to Mr. Reader and his team for, we now have an electronic program where we're able to more quickly approve trips and get the information back to the schools. So we've, we've got classic ones in libraries, VIMs, pumpkin patches, those kind of things. So we've got a lot going on with trips.
So the fifth graders, they're still going to go to Brownsville to, to trade the goods?
Yes, and they also work with seventh and tenth graders as well. Ms. Taylor, we'll, we'll talk about that, but yes.
Awesome.
Thank you, Ms. Farrell.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Ms. Taylor. Hi, good evening. So just to give you some updates on what's going on in the secondary world. So we have been working on pacing guides since last year. We have all the new math pacing guides posted on our website. We are patiently waiting from the state to get the second textbook adoption list out. So we can actually start working on textbook adoption. With the new math pacing guides posted, they are new, they are to be implemented this year. However, any student taking the algebra, algebra class fall semester does take the old SOL test. They take the new SOL test in the spring. So it is a little confusing, but we're working with the state on that. For the English, we have all the new high school English SOLs completed, updated and posted on the website. We have a couple things to finalize with middle school. Ms. Owens and I have been working with the middle school teachers to get that finalized. VDOE, so how do you update, they had to finish. So we're hoping to have that wrapped up and posted for next week. That again, we are getting ready to start working on the textbook adoption for that too and start getting samples. Last year, we posted the new science SOL. So those have been posted from last year. And then for history, that's a new project for this year. Because as I've told you all in the past, it's a huge change with history in general and how they're shifting the history down at grade level. So we'll be working on the new pacing guides. We'll have those posted as well as textbook adoption for that as well. So we're getting lots of new textbooks. And Ms. Owens and I are working together to put together binders, which will have also the pacing guides, the VDOE curriculum, and then some resources. And we had talked about putting it in the library, but then we said, probably better off it was in the actual common area where parents come in. So if they're waiting for the kids patiently coming out of the office, they could actually see it and it'd be more accessible to our parents and community. Science, with the S R funds this year, trying to zero out the last of the dollars. We were actually able to order Prisms for our middle and high school and twenty-four anatomy tablets for just the high school. The Prisms are three-D virtual glasses that are going to be used for math and science in the middle and high school. They can be used for anywhere from math six to algebra to, or science to biology. All the math and science subjects are uploaded with the virtual glasses. And the kids can actually do it all virtually and learn lessons that way. But it's a resource, it's not to replace the subject at all. And then next, the company is going to start uploading history. So that kids can actually do more history lessons virtually as well. And the company is coming to do a hands-on training with all of our students and with our teachers at the end of this month. So they will actually do a hands-on. And as you see on the right, that is actually what the anatomy tablet looks like. Originally, we wanted to get an anatomy table, which is a virtual three-D table. A little bit more complicated than we thought, but we actually thought the tablets would be better. Because that's more hands-on and that we could put students in groups. And honestly, it's going to come with two human cadaver apps. Where students can virtually dissect the human body, as well as other apps to be able to dissect as we go along, animals. Like right now, the science teachers, yes, they bring in, and they're still going to keep bringing their things to dissect. But this actually gives more of a virtual, which is going to totally put a whole different spin on how we teach anatomy and even our nursing program. So we will be using some of these tablets in our nursing program. So this will be really great for our students to get more of a hands-on. For the N N D C C, here's our numbers. So as you see, for the fall, we have sixty-four, and for the spring, we're already at forty-six. The goal for the nation is fifty, to maintain N N D C C. To be J R O T C is a hundred. We're there. So we're very excited. And we are still working on doing more recruitment for next semester and obviously for the following year. After two years, we could qualify to have our eighth graders join the program. So we feel like we've really hit the ground running with this and been very successful so far. It's been great to see the kids in there, it's great to see the excitement. And for them to understand that this is just not a program for the military, so many different things. And with that said, we just got an invitation that we're very excited about for it to take our teacher and lead cadets to participate in a memorial parade at Pearl Harbor in Hawaii. So we're very excited. That'll be December seventh, that's when they're going to have a parade. We are trying to work on funds. Uh, yes, that's a big one.
I'll chaperone.
It's going to need the volunteers for chaperoning for this, I mean, I can only imagine how a parade would.
Yes, we should all be there.
And actually, I, I talked to Holly yesterday because slowly making sure we're getting all the pieces in for how it would all be. So the Navy is actually going to fund one thousand dollars for each person, the teacher and for each student we take. And then out of pocket would be fifteen hundred dollars per person, which I think is a bargain to go all the way to Hawaii. That includes airfare, hotel, and four days.
Wow.
So talking to the teacher, I told her I'm going to see what I can do with Perkins and any other grants, as well as her kids, you know, talking to her kids about fundraising. Right now, we were looking at taking four cadets. The area manager has been with her. They've actually assessed students on leadership skills. And that's how you earn your ranking with the cadet, of being a cadet in the program. So right now, we're looking at four, ideally six would be great, but we know with the funding, it's going to be tight, so.
I just wanted to say, I, I was probably the first one to joke about on the chaperone piece, I just didn't say it really well. But I did want to also say, that's, that has a potential to be so impactful. So impactful.
Yeah, we are very excited just to be able to go, but then actually for our kids to experience. And I feel like for them to come back and help our other students. And we want them to come back and go to the other schools to help also with the recruitment. So they can see there's so many opportunities out there with this program. So hopefully, we can get the funds together, as we're hoping for, to be able to make this trip happen. So the next we have is welding. And as you see here, this is Stronghand Tools. It's a large manufacturing company of stamping systems and tools that specifically work with welding and related industries. And they recently donated several hundred dollars' worth of tools to our welding program. And Mr. Spilker was very kind, he does share with our other trade teachers. And also, on the next slide, is one of our new Lincoln welders. So we came before, before, we said we were requesting the funds to get six welders. With inflation, it only worked out that we could get four welders. But Mr. Spilker is very happy to have those four. Because in addition to getting the welder, he wanted the accessories to have those updated as well. Because that's just as important as the actual tool. And one of the welders actually comes with all the accessories to weld aluminum. So aluminum is not a state requirement for Level one and two. It's typically a Level three, four with a specialty. But we've got some really talented kids that he feels very confident that he would like to get our Level one and two kids into that. And even if they came back as a post-grad for Level three and four, we can do that as well. And at least this is a one-time opportunity to be able to get that equipment. Also, with our auto welding, Drummond's and Oak Hall is closing. So together, they went over, that's where we typically get our auto parts for the auto program. So that's going to be a little struggle once they officially close. Because it's so convenient just to run over there and get an oil filter or whatever it is they need. But they were actually able to get those supplies for a bargain, almost a steal of a deal that they gave our two teachers to be able to organize their space a whole lot better and be able to have the tools to be able to have the program more efficient. Also, they stopped by the cabinet company, or business rate beside it that's up for sale, and talked to them. And they potentially may be willing to donate some cabinets, which are the custom-made cabinets where they're closing as well, to our programs. To be able to help again, make things more efficient, more organized for the programs itself. Also, just wanted to let you know that both of those programs have one-third female in both of them. This is the highest number of non-traditional students we've had in the trade program. And that is one of the number-one goals of VDOE, which is to have more non-traditional and more special population students into our trade program. So we've done an exceptional job with that. With GIRA, this is our tenth-grade cohort. As you know, it keeps moving up each year. And we've started planning some upcoming events, including college tours. One of the newest events, which is being hosted by Eastern Community College, is the Career Adventure Day. It's similar to what we do with junior achievement in eighth grade. And we do have a career day that we hosted at Arcadia in the spring. But this one's going to actually be hosted by the Eastern Community College. Where we can take all of our tenth graders, who fortunately are here up soon as two. And they're going to host a career day in October for us. So we're really excited about that. I was working on a couple of calculations up this morning, trying to help work out some details and counts and how it's all going to operate with that. For the lab school, for our aerospace academy. So we are waiting still for VDOE's HR department to release the actual director's position. The JavaScript was already created, we just need them to actually post it. And we are in the process now of creating the JavaScript for the education specialist. ODUU kind of put their staff first to get their school year up and going, and now they'll be working on that. We will be hosting a kickoff for eighth graders on November eighth and tentatively the fifteenth. Those are two Fridays. We will take two schools each day because again, we're combined with Northampton County for the eighth graders. And the students will build rockets and launch them on those two days. We're estimating anywhere from at least fifty to a hundred rockets we plan to launch. We want this to be one of the biggest launches we do, other than what NASA does. But we're very excited because NASA is a huge contributor and help with this kind of project. And they're very excited about it as well to get this going. And this will be a great way for us to promote the program and give out applications for students that want to apply for the lab school itself. We do have two tours already lined up. One's at the end of this month for Richmond to do a lab school tour there. And then I'm going to be sending four people to Elizabeth City in North Carolina with ODUU and several people from Northampton to tour lab school in October. So we have two lab school tours to do to help with this whole planning process to get things going. And both of those lab schools are very big with aerospace and the NASA and all of that. So we're looking forward to that. We are starting to form the curriculum committee and map out the classes needed for the pathways to be more specific of what exactly do they need to start doing in middle school to carry forward into the high school once they get accepted in the program. Some of the members include NASA, ODUU, and I'll be recruiting some staff, you know, within our division, the same as Northampton's going to recruit within their division to put some insight into it. And I'm looking at people not only just from high school, but also like from elementary and middle school with the same programs that some of those teachers are involved in. We do have our governing boards that does consist of the superintendents of all of the Region Two lab schools. Our first meeting is next week, and it also consists of the LEAs. So we're excited to see how that goes. We'll be creating the MOU for our school division with Northampton and the MOU on the next steps moving forward for the planning process. Here are some upcoming events, I just want to put some dates there. We did start growth testing this week and primary testing is today and tomorrow, but it will carry on throughout the week. Because obviously, we need to get makeup tests and things done as the students come to school. We have an review on last year's data in accordance to the all-inclusive criteria. And it hasn't, we've seen significant growth from what we originally started with last year to where we are now. We know we have more to do, but we feel great with the success of what our students have done with the growth progress. As Ms. Farrell has said, so we do have a trip again planned this year. We did it last year, we're doing it again this year with all seventh and tenth graders with the Nature Conservancy again this year. So we're excited with that. And then some other updates that we have is with the S R funds and Title V, we were able to, and Title IV, we were able to replenish and buy new STEM equipment for all elementary and middle school STEM labs and the Computer Systems Technology Badger Program. We spent a little over a hundred thousand dollars combined with all the grants. So we're very excited to get more things going with our kids. And as you all have seen, they're excited when they come to you all and show you what they're doing in their classes. Also, with S R funds, we were able to purchase instructional. Also, with ESR funds, we were able to purchase instructional simulators for our HVAC program and for the auto program. Our nursing program was very conservative with their funds last year, so she's going to be able to buy some simulators with her leftover or carry-forward funds that she had in her instructional account. So, those three programs are going to be getting new simulators for those. Auto last year bought a gasoline simulator. This year, they want an electric simulator, so kids can see how to work on those styles of cars. But HVAC, those simulators, some are forty years old. They're old. Not that we don't still have the equipment out in the world that still needs to know how to use it old, but with new technology, they definitely need some of theirs. So, those are just a few things we're working on. Any questions?
I just wanted to say it's good to hear the donation of the tools and all that, but maybe we need some Snap-on tools donated.
Yes, that would have been great if Snap-on would donate some tools. That would have been wonderful.
Thank you. Thank you. That was great.
I had your access and I can, I can go over our DJ and over.
I reached out to all the town police departments that I've been asked to through their emails, phone calls, emails and phone calls of the messages. And, you know, they were receptive, but I only had one come and give the bag, one police officer come get the bag. So, they know about it and I've shared with them what the process is. Dr. Hall sent an email, a very detailed email about how to go about doing it. So, they just need to, if you know some of them, you need to encourage them to go on in and see us, so we can get it going.
State Police and Chair Officer Dunn.
Now, before me, I believe.
Jack had done the ones that, and they are, these were the local ones that you told us. That I would ask from Jack. So, shake it to the police department, they have it.
I mean, none of that common to get it.
All right. And how about the absenteeism dashboard? That one's been packed.
Now, so it hasn't changed, because that dashboard does not change on my private website. However, what we decided to do is so that we can monitor and we can use the information, is that we will keep our own local kind of report. And we will give you each school's attendance for each month moving forward. And then we can monitor and make sure that we're all standing under the radar, we're all standing green. And that's a good way to monitor. But the one that we were looking at from the state department, that's on the way, so that won't change again until.
So, you all upload information monthly, or but it doesn't let you see what you entered?
Because it won't.
Until the end of the year.
And they'll tell you if you're red, green or yellow. But we can give it monthly. Well, Del and I had talked about getting the information from the buildings and from the try-and-do teams. And so that we can say, okay, this school needs to be really careful. And we kind of did that last year. We went to different schools and talked to the principal staff. Okay, this is waiting for us, so what are you going to do? Make sure you don't go over the net, so we can get that.
Okay, thank you. And then, did we already do this at-risk funds?
We did that.
We took care of that, so we're going to hear about that.
I'm not going to say. You know, normally, they say it's best for last, but not tonight. Bat removal, Nandu High School. Where do I start? Okay, I've got two proposals in front of me that are really similar to one another, other than the language. I have read these things over a lot in the last few days. I've called these people and got answers. They, they're very similar in their approach. Both of them are going to use it. The language varies. One of them's going to use bat valves. The other one's going to use bat excluders. These are devices. They put all the areas that the bats are getting into the school right now, which is mostly weep holes in the brick. And under the, where the metal roof comes down, turns on the face of the building they're getting there. The foam that was in there in places is deteriorating, so they're going there. There's roughly, and I did not count them all, about seventeen hundred weep holes on the building in the brick where these bats are going in and out. One proposal is putting a bat valve on a lot of them. The other one's putting one of the ones that feel necessary. I talked to this guy today. The biggest differences is in our approach. One is going to use mortar to patch these weep holes, which is okay, but not ideal. The other one's going to use a sealant, a caulk to do it. Both of them are going to use like a galvanized hardware caulk or like steel wool or something like that in it first, and then just put the caulk or masonry cement, mortar mix in it. Both of them are going to do the excluders. Both of them have a one-year warranty. The biggest difference in the two proposals I got in front of me is a hundred eighty-five thousand dollars. One of them is two hundred fifty thousand, six hundred forty-three dollars, and the other one is sixty-four thousand, nine hundred thirty dollars. Outside of that, they're basically, one is using more of the bat to get, these baffled valves and excluders, they go on openings, like on a weep hole. The bats can go out. They can't come back in. So, once they go out, he's going to leave and replace five days. They say, oh, the bats can be gone, then they'll begin to seal it. The other guy is not putting them on every single one, because he doesn't feel like, he said, because the bats travel between the brick veneer and the masonry behind it, the void. He said the bats travel through there. I'm not a bat expert, so I'm, you know, deferred to them a lot of this stuff, but, I mean, I don't know. Short of just deciding who to go with, I don't know what we need to do. It is a problem. What I would say is it's a ongoing problem. Question.
So, the price again was, one's quarter million and the other one was?
Sixty-four thousand.
And of the two, the sixty-four thousand's one, is that the one just with the mortar?
No, that's the one using sealing. They're going to use, what they're, both of them, both of them are going to use a wildlife foam in the voids, like where the metal's at. The bigger voids. They're putting a foam there. It's a wildlife foam that expands. It's supposed to be shiny. Cretters don't choose to do it. Both of them were telling me all about it. I trust them that that's what it does. And the other one's going to use the two hundred fifty thousand, which is going to use mortar to go back in all the weep holes. And mortar them all up except for a small hole. And I don't, I wish I had PowerPoint tonight. I don't have one. I'm sorry for that, but I'm going to, just if there's any. You all can pass my phone around. If something silly pops up, just. This is, this is a weep hole that in the brick. Just so you kind, they're roughly six inches tall. They're every four foot. And on the higher section of the building, there's three. One at ground level, one midway, and then one towards the top. And so, I mean, that's kind of what it is. And the guy, one guy says seventeen hundred. I don't, he made a count. I don't know. But that's the one they're going to use mortars at two hundred fifty thousand dollars. He's got a lot of additional stuff in his where he needs lifts, a sixty-foot articulating boom truck and all this other stuff. And the other guy kind of said that he could do it, you know, mostly with ladders and stuff like that. He may have to run a small lift. And another thing I will say to you is, in order to address this the way we need to, there are seventeen holly trees planted from the south corner of Nandu High to the corner of Horace Tenscore, all the way up to nearly where you turn in to go to the maintenance shop in the back where the greenhouse is. Those seventeen trees will be removed. Actually, they'll be removed until September twenty-fifth. It's early day out. They can get it all done that day. The other option was do it on the weekend and the price escalated. The tree's got to move because it's up against the building. Remember, these trees have outgrown their lifespan from where they're planted. They're too close to the building. They've gotten too big. So, I mean, they're going to, they stay there, it's going to be additional problems in the future, the drains and things like that. So, we're going to get them out, grind all the stumps, get everything done. The contractors assured me he can do it that day, be done where there's no disruptions and so. I'm glad we had to work it out. And then both of these can get here, you know, pretty quickly to do this work. I think it will be somewhat disruptive. It won't be terrible. Everything's on the exterior. There's not going to be a lot of beating and banging, putting stuff in. Now, the one thing on this, bats are protected. They go, they call it a blackout time, where you can't mess with it. That period of time starts according to one of these guys in mid-October, or the other one is in the wintertime. And I can't find anything on it, but it's a state deal where they can't do this work once it gets to that time period. So, if they don't get the work done, we'll deal with the bats till you can begin working on it again when they come out of their hibernation and mating season, which is sometime in August, spring. So, it's one of those things. We've got to get it done and try to deal with it, or we wait till when the blackout season is over. I feel silly because I don't really know what I'm talking about on some of this stuff. I'm just, you know.
It's a very unusual situation.
You know, in thirty-plus years of this type of work, I haven't really dealt with it.
So, this, you may have covered this, and I'm going to do like fifteen hundred just claim, but I feel like I'm asking a dumb question. Sealing those spaces is one thing. They are assuring you that they're going to make sure that the bats are out, that we're not sealing them in.
That's a question, no, that's a great question, because I told the guys today, I said, I need you to call me. I said, look, I might ask you a dumb question, but what are you telling me to assure me these bats are out before we seal it up? And if these bats are still in and we seal it up, they die. How bad is it going to stay? And he told me that he pretty much assured me that the bats wouldn't be out. Again, these are bat guys, and I'm not bat man, so.
They have to leave to eat.
That's right. And they have to leave to eat. And then as they try to get back in, they can't get back in the excluders or the bat valve.
Let them two weeks to get out.
Yeah, that, one guy says he allows them five days to get out. The other one says they last two weeks before they get out, before they start sealing anything. And the one guy, the way this guy talked, as they remove like a, one of the excluders, they'll seal that up. And he said his process may take a week longer, because he may add additional excluders, so if any of there, they get in. He's putting his like every hundred foot on the building, and he said he would put more if thought necessary. But he said that's what he normally does, because he said the bats will actually, if they try to, they try to go out somewhere that's sealed, they'll crawl somewhere else. And they're, they're mice with wings, so they crawl around to where they go. You know, they're mice with wings. I've seen you make a face.
Two questions. Where are the companies located in that thing? Where, where are the two people from, the businesses?
Both of them are across the bay. One of them, the critter control, I should have told you the other company's name. One's critter control and one is nice wildlife. Critter, critter control is a national, so they've got their independent contractors throughout, but they're a national company. I think that the nice wildlife guy, he's from, he was across the bay somewhere, maybe Suffolk or something. I mean, both in this area.
So, what building are they currently living in?
Nandu.
Nandu, North Ontario High School.
Yeah, I mean, they're.
So, when they leave, what building they go to next?
I didn't want to have to answer this question, but I'll tell you when I asked the question, what he told me, the neighboring houses.
Oh, my.
I didn't want to be here to say that, so you asked.
Are there any other buildings in Nandu that they're going to get into?
No, we don't think so.
The Cook's hat.
Maybe, maybe they may be able to get into the hall building, the athletic source facility. They may be beginning to that. I mean, they may go to Nandu Middle School. I mean, you know, we were told that. Nandu Middle School, though, it's newer construction. It's not going to have, you know, as many openings and things like that. Can't say that they won't go there. I, I believe in Nandu High.
They're going to go somewhere.
Yes, they're definitely going somewhere.
I guess my question is, Johnson, I need to ask one, but can we go ahead and look around at Nandu Middle, just to maybe have just a check seat and just to kind of give a.
I think now that, I think now that both Paul and myself are more educated, if you can be educated on that. We can look around and look at it before we either, whoever we choose to do this.
Exactly, that's what I'm saying.
You know, go and kind of do a visual, maybe put some eyes up and check things that look like a void or something that they could get in. Kind of try to ensure they don't get in the middle school, absolutely.
Is there a guarantee?
Both of them offer a one-year warranty. It's both of them offer a one-year warranty. Here's my take on that, and it's y'all's decision. We go with the sixty-four thousand dollar one, one-year warranty. Year number two, they come back, we use them again. We can use them up to three times before we even get close to the other guy's proposal. Of course, that gets me retired. Wasn't I supposed to say that? I hate to be joking about it, but this has really been an eye-opening experience. And you were there, but they had the bat went crazy in the thing. So, I mean, it's not, that part's not funny. And if somebody did get bit at Nandu, so I mean, they're going through a series of painful rabies shots. So, it's not a joking matter. I mean, I'm thankful for the children to get bitten, you know, I'm thankful that we've got a bat call, except for that day. Generally, we can catch them in the net and we can take them outside, get rid of them. Oh, yeah, I mean.
Did you contact Supro? Supro?
Yes, yes, ma'am.
No, not.
We, we had an issue.
Okay. So.
Which one was it?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, I will clear that up. The one person that got bit had caught the bat in the net and was trying to release it. It was caught in the net, and he reached up there with his hand to try to get it out of that. He got bit, so. Bad law.
I believe that we should accept the moment to review the events, and they do a high sheet.
Sir.
On the favor.
Aye.
A post. Thank you. Interesting time. Mr. Spino, do you have any comments?
I do not.
Dr. Johnson? I'm excited. Is that, I think we, and yes. For everybody listening, parent university is set. The nurses is set. Yes, so it's a good time, a lot of good drink sources. I encourage everyone to attend. It's great and they start a nice lunch.
I'd just like to say that those that are listening, that things have been happening, I guess, around the country, especially in Georgia, the school shootings. That parents just really reach out, talk to their children, and also let them know too that no joking around about, probably about any kind of guns or bomb threats or anything like that, because we will take it seriously. I don't want to speak for my other board members, but I'm pretty sure that we're all in agreement that safety of our students and our staff are number one. So, again, please talk to your children.
Yeah, I just got one statement. It's been six weeks. I still haven't heard back from U-chairperson about reason why I could not be on the interview.
To be clear, I am following the practice of the previous chair. The previous chair and the vice chair sat in on the interview panels. Now, I don't know what your problem is that you.
Excuse me first.
You're, you're interrupting me. You're interrupting me. You, nobody ever questioned him about being on these area panels. So, I don't know if you have a problem with me, because I'm a woman, for what the issue is.
I do not have a problem as a woman or the chairperson. The issue I have is you treat him as you are. This is the new board. We're trying to be as one. And it's like you do not, you stand in the past. We're trying to move forward. But in your mind, you don't want to move forward. You're still going back to the past. We're trying to move forward. I guess that's a simple question, and it's just me, you know.
I responded to your question. Mr. Webber.
I'm good, sir. I just want to thank everybody for the updates and thank Sheriff Wessels for coming in here and giving us his concerns. And thank you, Batman, if he's still here. He did a very good job for another member of us up there, who released this problem and resolved. He did a very good job for another member of us up there, hopefully we can just problem resolve.
Super Gen is important. All right, um, I have sent letters out to parents about saving, talking to their kids about, um, saving, not making threats and whatnot to bring to school and things like that. So those letters have been sent out to all parents. Letters, uh, a letter was sent to the Nando High School parents about bats. Because I know that, um, once the removal starts, then there's going to be a lot of questions about what is going on. So to get ahead of it and be transparent, I just let them know that, um, we are taking care of the issue, um, and, um, have them removed and everything. Invitations have been set for the strategic planning task force, um, first meeting is on September twenty-fifth, so those invitations have been sent out. Um, also, information, um, has been sent out to parents and some of those schools, as you've noticed, they posted, I sent it out today, and they posted it on the website already, because we have, um, the ability to send text messages to parents, um, a post or a local call, or we could send both, but parents have to give consent, because with anything else, um, when you send messages to your home, it might be charged. So the parents have to, and the board members got a copy of that too, that, um, you don't want to have a text message because we might take over your limit of whatever your messages are, however, so that's been sent out also. The new cell phone guidance was released, um, yesterday, I sent that out to all board members. And, um, in going through that, the, the final guidance, we're right where we need to be. Um, ours is very consistent with the final guidance, because we went a little bit above what was recommended in the draft guidance. So we're where we need to be. The only thing that we need to do, and maybe about this, and maybe we can, um, make it a adjustment or amendment to ours is, when there is an emergency, are we going to allow our students to take their cell phones out? An emergency evacuation, or instance, like they were talking about there, um, students in Georgia. When those students were evacuated, they left their backpacks and things like that, but they were saying, should they have, or some of them probably did, were allowed to take their cell phones, because then you're in communication with the parents then, and they're not, they're not as worried, or they know that you're there and what have you. So we decided we're going to say, no, even in an emergency situation, you cannot have your cell phones on school, on school grounds. So that's something we need to think about. Um, we also need to put our emergency evacuation plans for each school, we need to put those on, um, in our policy. And we need to share the evacuation plans with our parents, that's, those are the things that are in the, the guidance that came out. Then the last question is, when do you want to include a student on the board? Because then I can start the, the process, you know, to ask them, so what month do you want them to start?
Are you such a hard process?
All right, I'm sure.
Yes.
So, I think we were asked a question about what's our position on it there, the, my words. The need to evacuate, we, we allow students to take their cell phones. And looking at the updated guidance, it looks like that's something that's, that definitely crossed the Commonwealth. One of them, what was it, about three things, right, that showed up in the over six thousand comments. So that may be something that we would want to consider. Megan, I'm not suggesting to deny this.
I, I'm making no.
Okay. And then my, my other item is representing the board, our board on the strategic planning task force.
So it'll be postponed, and if I'm going to go, as it was explained today, there's going to be different goals. So I thought I would go to the first meeting and then recruit people for each of it. So each goal will have its own. Because I think the first meeting, that meeting, that big group of people is only going to come in like at the beginning and then maybe again at the end. So most of the meat of it is going to be in the committees. Is that right? There's our meat, but we can still add people to the committee. Um, we have a core committee, and then on each one of those committees, I will pull them, we all got them. That's all right. Okay.
So if we go back to the cell phone emergency evacuation, um, was there recommendation or is that, I hear that?
It's in there that the board needs.
We need to discuss, yes, we need to discuss.
Nobody's giving a recommendation?
No, they have not given a recommendation. Um, but it's one of the things that they discussed is that if you have, that the kids, when they have to evacuate, to brand their cell phones, you know, especially them in the back.
Yes.
Um, the board will now adjourn to a closed session.
The board were adjourned to closed meeting.